Doesn't matter. Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a short staff recommendation, excuse me, staff presentation on item number sixty-eight, and then I will open the public hearing. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a text amendment request to modify section seven oh three C, temporary fencing of the zoning ordinance to address the requirements for temporary fences in and around golf courses as well as a time limitation. So, the proposal originally put forth by staff is that temporary fencing be limited to one year unless a safety hazard exists. They have to get a use permit approved if it's a perimeter golf course fence. They also have to have a use permit that provides opportunity to mitigate the public impacts with the temporary fencing and mandates a minimum fifty-foot setback from their perimeter residential property. They do have to submit a landscape plan with that as well as part of the use permit, and the use from an applicant must justify the need for the perimeter fencing as opposed to a by right fencing that they could do around the lake or a sand trap within five feet. They could do that by right. So, this does allow temporary fencing for those safety hazards like the sand traps and lake hazards, but not along the perimeter unless you get the approved use permit. This exhibit shows what the proposed language looks like from staff, where you have the green area that would require a use permit, but if you wanted to do a fence like around a lake in the red area, you would be, in that case, allowed to put that fence up by right, within five feet of that hazard. Citywide also prohibits barbed wire or other equivalent fence toppings on temporary fences when visible from residential zone properties. Feedback from the village planning committees, there was some concern about signaling out one use, concern over the required fifty-foot setback and trapping debris and maintenance challenges and limiting some ingress and egress. Overall, it was approved by six of the village planning committees, denied by five, and four did not hear it. One of the changes that some of the village planning committee members talked about and you saw just from that last slide is that fifty-foot zone and that being a potential area of concern with people being able to have access in there, who was going to maintain that, trapping debris, those types of issues. And so, the Calhoun East Village Planning Committee and the Maryville Village Planning Committee discussed removing that fifty-foot setback requirement for fences that are behind single-family homes where there's already an existing fence. So, you would, in that version, just have fences that would be on the public street or adjacent to a low screen wall around an apartment, something like that. That way, you would eliminate the duplicate fence possibility. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, so we'll take questions in a moment. I think we're gonna do the public hearing first. So, now I'm gonna open up the public hearing on item number sixty-eight, Temporary Fencing in Golf Courses Text Amendment. The public hearing is now open. Are there any cards on this item? Is anyone here to testify on item number sixty-eight? Going once, going twice. The public hearing is now closed. I'll hand it over to Councilman Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Ellen Stevenson and his entire team for all the work that you put in to this. We actually have a golf course, I'll call it an issue that we're working through in District Five with Vita Paz, but I know that it's not the only golf course issue happening in the city and certainly not the first in our history. Most likely won't be the last in our history, and I view this as something that's positive, that has neighborhood protections. And so, I'd like to make a motion. Motion is to approve Z-T-A-two-one-four per the NHD recommendation and adopt the related ordinance with the following changes. Section seven oh three C, one B, one A, the temporary fence shall only be located in places of public access to the course. Section seven oh three C, one B, one B, landscaping within fifty feet of the perimeter. These changes, as Ellen mentioned, will help eliminate a potential safety issue, and that's how I see it. It'll help eliminate the safety issue while doing its purpose, which is to protect the neighbors. This is something that was communicated and discussed, this particular change in the Maryville Village Planning Committee as well as the Calhoun East Planning Committee. And so, for that, I would like to make a motion with those changes to approve.
All right, so the motion has some amendments as proposed by the councilman in addition to the staff recommendation. So, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments by members of this council?
Just a quick, oh, go ahead.
There's a couple more. I'll get you just a second, Councilman DeCecio. Councilman Nowakowski, please.
It talks about temporary for one year. Can they come back and ask for a renewal of that? And how many renewals can they get?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, they can come back and renew that for up to thirty-six months, so three years.
That's about three years?
Yeah.
And that was basically the big concern that South Mountain and Levine had, right?
Yeah, they were concerned about temporary fences becoming more permanent fences, I would say.
Okay. Was there any other concerns that they had? Because that was the main one I heard.
I believe that was the main concern that they had.
Okay.
Other comments? Councilman Gago?
I guess I heard from the South Mountain and Levine Village Planning Commissioners that they were very concerned about enforcement's levels at the Neighborhood Services Department being inadequate, and that's something we hear often in South Mountain and an issue we'll be dealing with at the next Neighborhoods Committee, that perhaps our process is not as quick or that many, even if we send letters, people feel that there's still some issues. And so, they had concerns that they would have a bunch of golf courses with lots of fences around every single sand trap and that it wouldn't look any better and might look even worse than some of them now. So, I had thought at the Neighborhood Housing Committee that the fifty-foot setback was the main issue and that addressing that would address the Village Planning Commission issues, but I'm still hearing a lot of feedback from the village that they have concern, and that's why the majority in my district voted against it. And then, they also asked, so I just want to make sure I understand Councilman Valenzuela's motion. It may address some of the issues. When it's only in places of public access, if the golf course is closed, what would that mean?
So, Mayor, Councilman, yeah, Councilman Gago, on the slide up here, there's another exhibit and you see in this area, the intent is to allow a fence, per the motion by Councilman Valenzuela, in areas where there's public access. So, if there's a street that connects up, then that fence would go from one side of the single-family home to the other side and block access from that street into the golf course, but it wouldn't be a duplicate fence behind a single-family home.
Okay, but there would still be by right from every sand trap and every water feature could all have?
Correct. That would still be there by right from a safety standpoint.
And then, one of our villages was very concerned about how we'd worked with the police department on this issue and what feedback we got from them.
Yeah, the Neighborhood Services Department, as you know, is our enforcement department of this. One of the key strengths that we built into this text amendment is the requirement for a landscape plan if they were coming forward for the perimeter fencing, because the biggest issue that Neighborhood Services Department tells us is that they don't have enforcement teeth when they have to go to a court case on where the existing landscaping is. So, if somebody doesn't maintain it, they don't have anything to prove that there was landscaping there. So, that's where we think with the use permit proposal, we are improving the enforcement capabilities of NSD, but it would primarily be their responsibility to enforce, not the police department.
And I think this concern was that putting up all these fences would be even more of a signal that the property was not being actively used and that that might attract crime.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Gago, you're correct. Some people may, you know, think that that's an issue.
So, did we talk with the police department at all about whether that would be an issue?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I'm not ready to support the recommendation.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Gates?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good proposal. I want to thank staff for all their work on this. This unfortunately is an issue that we're having to deal with, and we're not alone. I mean, this is going on nationwide as golf courses are closing. It's an impact of what's happened with the sport and what's happened with the economy. And so, I think it's good to get ahead of this issue. In some ways, obviously, some of this has already occurred, and putting the use permit requirement in place, giving the neighbors the opportunity to speak out and weigh in on these issues makes a lot of sense to me. And if, as time goes on, we need to tweak this, I would certainly be supportive of that as we're hearing comments from the neighbors, but it's something that we need to give the neighbors the opportunity to speak out on it and to weigh in, and so, I will be supporting this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Councilman Williams, please.
I want to thank staff too, because I was very much opposed to it, creating an alleyway behind everybody's house. I just could see the transients, the trash, and the lack of maintenance and the fire hazards. I think this is a good compromise, but I too want to see how it works, and I would not be opposed if we need to make changes in the future because I fear that this could happen in other areas too. But, thank you for your work on this.
Other comments?
Mayor?
DeCecio, please.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. And I can address what Councilwoman Gago mentioned earlier. And right now, if you look at it, there is by right. They can come up and put fencing up pretty much anywhere they want on the golf course. This adds an extra layer, an extra component that gives the neighbors a voice in that fencing. So, if you look at it right now, the current ordinance to vote no on this literally says you can put up razor wire in the neighborhood, because that's what our current ordinance is, and the owner or the developers of the property have every right to put up fencing pretty much anywhere that they want right now. What this does is it puts restrictions on the fencing, and it adds a neighborhood component where it gives the neighbors the ability, the right to be able to give their voice on what is going on in their neighborhood. But, it also does some other things. One, it creates a visual corridor, which is critical for neighborhoods. It protects neighborhoods by keeping property, it'll keep property values up, because that's not the first thing that you will see. Currently, they can build pretty much, put a fence up with razor wire right up to the property line, and there is no visual corridor. If people are trying to sell their homes, then they will, you know, in any neighborhood, it doesn't have to happen just adjacent to it. It could happen within a half mile to three-quarters of a mile of a golf course, where this becomes an impact in that community. The second thing that it does is it prevents abandoned golf courses from blighting neighborhoods. It puts restrictions in there on landscaping. The third thing that it does, by requiring a landscaping plan, it prevents unsightly dead vegetation in a neighborhood. It says, okay, if you want to come in and get a fence, tell us the type of plants that you have here, and if you're, especially in the summer heat right now, taking water away kills off those plants. And killing off those plants, it creates dead vegetation, which then creates a blight. The other point, dealing with staff being able to, I think staff's just done an incredible job with Neighborhoods Services. They were out there, at least in one of the neighborhoods that I was in, in the Owatuki Golf Course, which has about 5,000 individuals or homes it impacts. They did a really good job of going out there, making sure that they kept up with the blight, and this just adds another component, another tool in the tool chest for them to be able to make sure that blight does not occur. It removes the barbed wire fences from a neighborhood, and just as importantly, prevents the developer from getting concessions from neighbors that they would not normally get. So, I'm supportive of this, and I want to thank staff for all their hard work on it. And I know that some of the villages had issues, but I think a lot of those issues dealt with, the fact that some of them wanted to be a lot stricter. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Gago?
And I just wanted to respond to Councilman DeCecio, because several of the villages said we'd like you to come back to us. We have very serious concerns, and so, I would prefer that we take that step and see if we can have an even better policy. It's significant that so many of our villages denied this, and I think it's nice to be respectful for them and make sure that we follow back up with them and get their input on this so that we can get a policy that works across our cities, because several other villages said it may make sense in Owatuki, but we have different concerns throughout the city. And I'm sorry that we don't have time to do that, but I'd still be...
The mayor, allowing razor wire and...
You're done, Councilman?
Right, and I'm not saying that the status quo is perfect. I'm saying that the process would be better if we came back to our villages, because in my conversations with them, they still have concerns that we could improve the policy before finalizing it, because we often don't seem to come back to these issues. We do it once and then move on to the many other important things that we're going to, and although we say we will revisit it, in my limited experience, we often, the status quo is powerful.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
No, it's just that the current policy right now, I mean, if you look at it, this is a pretty simple policy. What it does is, you know, it creates a visual corridor, like I mentioned, and it gets rid of the razor wire in the neighborhood. I think that there, you know, may have been some other issues, but the fact that they would like to see it more strict. But, at the end of the day, if you look at what all the other, the neighbor, the villages, you know, pretty much we adopted their recommendations later that came in later than what was presented some of these other villages earlier.
Well, then, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to take it back to the villages and see if they do agree with the changes we made, since we have made some significant changes since many of them denied it.
Okay, so, we have a substitute motion on the table. The substitute motion would, instead of moving forward with the proposed item with the changes recommended by Councilman Valenzuela, would instead, having us vote on it today, would have it sent back to the villages for their analysis with the additions. Do we have a second on the motion?
Here, I'll second that.
Do we have a second on the motion? Any comments on the substitute motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Williams, please.
It's a question for staff. If we take this back to the villages, does that mean it won't come back to the council until probably fall?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, probably not until September at the earliest because of the break.
Thank you.
All right, other comments on the proposed substitute motion? Councilman Valenzuela?
I will, with all due respect, I won't be supporting the substitute motion. This has gone through a very long process. I do, I do agree that this can continue to be tweaked. I think it's up to us to see to it that this does come back to the council, that it, you know, that it can continue to be discussed at the villages, but there are some issues that are time-sensitive. And frankly, there's a Vita Paz issue in the far west part of Phoenix in District Five where a community is, could very well be facing this issue at any moment. And so, I owe it to that community and to others that have spoken out when it comes to these issues to stick with the original motion and to move this forward. Now, I do appreciate the concerns of every village and the comments of my colleagues. And with that, again, I agree. Every neighborhood is unique. What's right for one part of town or one particular neighborhood may not be ideal for the next, but again, I think it's on us to keep the conversation moving, and I will always support the idea of bringing something back and having it tweaked, if, or at least that discussion as we move forward. But, I will not be supporting the substitute motion. I will be sticking with the original motion.
All right, any other comments? Councilman Nowakowski?
Alan, do we have, what's ordinance right now? Can somebody just put up a six-foot fence with barbed wire? Or do they still have to go get a permit?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, they do have to come in and get a permit. There's no public hearing process for it, so they can come in and get an over-the-counter permit to install a temporary fence.
Now, can we restrict the barbed wire on top of that fence?
Currently, no. The ordinance allows it. This proposed text amendment will change that.
And then, the other thing is the poor code enforcement. That was one of the concerns that the Encanal, I understand their concern is that there's been apartments that had these fences on for about four years, and they keep on getting a temporary permit. Sometimes they don't even get a temporary fence permit. They just leave them up, and there's no enforcement of it. So, what type of enforcement will we have with this new policy in making sure that these people aren't, that they are buying the new policy that we're enforcing?
So, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, this proposal is for golf courses only, and what it would do is if somebody has an existing fence that's up that they legally got a permit for, they would, until that permit runs out, which is good for a year, once it runs out, then this new ordinance would kick in. So, anybody who has a fence that's up today, they would be grandfathered until their one year's up, and then, once that takes place, we would have the new text amendment that we would adhere to and make them comply with. And as part of that, the Services Department has a little more enforcement teeth related to the landscaping as part of the use permit proposal. We could also revoke a use permit if they came in and wanted to pursue that route around the perimeter if they didn't maintain the property, didn't do things correctly per the approved use permit stipulations. We could revoke that.
There's some areas in my district where we actually had homeowners, I mean, property ownership changed, and some of the properties were actually owned by the bank, and it was kind of a limbo period of time where we couldn't enforce anything because we didn't know who the owner of that property was. Are we gonna, is there something to trace or track the property owner? But, let's see, if it goes foreclosed, who do we enforce this new ordinance on?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, there's nothing in this ordinance that would allow us any greater enforcement ability in those types of applications. It's my understanding that it's primarily an issue when there's a foreclosure of who owns the property, and trying to track that down is a difficult, you know, legal issue to then find who to cite. So, it's not anything that we can write a text amendment for in the zoning ordinance to address.
Then, the last is, there's some concerns in the Maryville villages that campaign signs and other signs being put on the fence, and there's no type of enforcement on that. So, once again, there's not an additional staff or there's not an additional fee to enforce these new ordinances?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, there, if they come in for a use permit, there is a $1,380 fee. They have to apply for that, but there is no separate enforcement fees related to that. Campaign signs are allowed on private property, you know, so as long as they meet the requirements for size. So, if somebody wanted to put one up on a fence here, they could, they could do that as well.
So, somebody can just put up a political sign on a fence without the owner's permission?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, no, they need the owner's permission to do it.
Okay. You know, I think there's a lot of concerns. I'm just reading these, those were the concerns from the villages. I think those are concerns that we need to really address. I had the same situation out in the Levine area, and really sitting down with the property owners and sitting down with the homeowners, I mean, it was a battle. It was a year and a half battle, and we basically figured it out. I think that there's no type of enforcement behind this. I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a bunch of properties fenced off. You're gonna have weeds growing up there. You're gonna have blight issues, and we're not gonna have any way to enforce it. So, I'd really like to take it back to the villages, to those individuals that understand their neighborhoods, and actually come up with some type of enforcement process or policy before passing this, because I think that once we pass it without any type of enforcement, it's gonna be a blight issue out there, and especially with the economic downturn, and especially with golf courses right now. So, it would be yes to the secondary motion and no to the first.
All right, thank you very much. So, Councilman Nowakowski will support the substitute motion. Any other comments by members of this, of this council? Councilman?
Yeah, just, sorry, just briefly, it's a question actually that relates to the underlying motion, but I think it impacts this as well. What's the, if we were to pass, if the substitute motion fails and the underlying motion is passed, when does that go into effect? Because there has been an issue here about the urgency of this. So, when would the underlying motion go into effect if passed?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, it would go into effect thirty days after adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, so, there's not an emergency clause on this?
No, there's not. However, I would like to clarify that at least in one of the instances where we have threatened or closed golf courses, there's already an existing fence up, and they have a legal permit under the old rules that won't expire until sometime this fall. So, they won't have to immediately comply with this ordinance, but when they come back in for that new permit, then they would have to apply. However, the golf course in Councilman Valenzuela's district does not yet have a fence, so they would have to comply with the new ordinance depending on when they came in.
Yeah, if they do it thirty days after the, today if the underlying motion is passed.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Pastor?
So, Ellen, my understanding is that all the villages had the opportunity and voted regarding this ordinance or this language.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, they all had an opportunity to review it. Three did not have a quorum during that time, and they each had two times they could have reviewed it. And the fourth one did review and talk about it, ultimately decided not to make a recommendation, although I think it's fair to say they did have some concerns about it in terms of their general comments, but they just chose not to make a recommendation.
So, if the original motion passes, we have the ability to bring it back and make some amendments to it, and also hear, put it into play and see what the dynamics of it, and also be able to work with the other villages into understanding what really the bigger issue is.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments by members of this, of this council?
Just a quick one, Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio, please.
Yeah, if I could just reiterate again, too, to do nothing, I mean, right now, the current enforcement is still there, and under this, the current enforcement is still there. There's no change in that. All this does is that, right now, a property owner can move their fence right up to the property line. This moves the fence back, puts in a process where neighbors have a voice on that. Fencing, whether or not it should, should not go in and where it should be placed. The other part of it deals with, in answering to the campaign sign, you're still required by law to notify the property owner. If you put it up there, then it's up to the individual to be, you know, they can either be cited or they're gonna have to take the sign down. The property owner still has to do it. All those laws are always in place, and they're in place today, and they would be in place under this new ordinance. Again, this puts in a process where neighbors are able to get involved in it, they're able to voice their concerns, and it puts in place a requirement where it gets rid of the barbed wire, which right now, to vote no on this, ends up putting barbed wire fencing in people's neighborhood, whether it's in the Villas de Paz or anywhere else in the, in the city. So, it's a little befuddling to think that, I mean, it's not that complicated of a, of an ordinance. So, I'm gonna be voting no on the substitute motion and voting yes on the underlying one. And like Councilwoman Pastor said, we can always amend this, and since we're part of the subcommittee, I'll be happy to take it up in six months and have staff come in and give us a presentation through the subcommittee, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? Here's my question. It seems like a pretty good policy to give neighbors more of a say on fencing, particularly blighted fencing in a neighborhood. Why limit it to golf courses? You know, why not limit it for commercial areas? I had one in my old district at the northwest corner of Forty-Fourth Street in Calhoun where the blighted fence was put in, in many ways, probably for a strategic advantage, to try to gain a strategic advantage relative to future zoning opportunities. Is there a particular reason why staff has recommended this be limited to golf courses and not, it seems like the principles that Councilman DeCecio has very eloquently provided for the reasons why this makes sense for golf courses would equally make sense in, for other fencing in commercial areas or in residential areas as well?
I think that makes sense, Mayor, from my end, but you gotta check it out and see how it works here. The other thing is, and that's a really good point...
Councilman, that was a question for staff, I'm sorry. For Mr. Stevenson, Alan?
Mayor, from staff's perspective, it's the size of the golf courses that have the particular ability to cause a greater impact to the public just by virtue of how many homes back up to them, the fact you have people who bought properties that were backing up to a golf course with the underlying assumption that there was gonna be view fence, views of the golf course, and that going away. So, that's one of the factors. The other factor is that the original request that came from Council District Six and the Neighborhood Housing Development Subcommittee discussion was really related to golf courses. So, it wasn't a broader look that was requested at that time.
Councilman, are you supportive, Councilman DeCecio, are you supportive of adopting the same standards beyond just golf course scenario, but also in other commercials, properties?
Well, we should look at everything. I don't have a problem with looking at that, Mayor. What you've got to be concerned, there are two areas you've got to concern yourself with, and I think it's great that you brought that up. One, is it being used as a tool to create blight? Then, under those circumstances, like we have here with golf courses, that's something we ought to maybe look at. And then, the other part of it deals with, if something under construction, well, then they have every right to be able to fence off a property. What you've got to be concerned about, though, when you do this, and one of the things that I would be supportive of is to take a look at our razor wire ordinance on some of these commercial properties as well, whether or not they're allowed to have that. We can bring all these things up through the subcommittee and take a look at it, Mayor.
What do you think about the fifty-foot setback?
Well, why could you do that on a commercial property? How do you do that?
Well, for the, obviously, you brought up the, you brought up the visual blight issue that the neighbors could see it from their properties, and it creates property value. I think you raised an excellent point on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. And it's the razor wire, Mayor, that's the issue, too. I mean, that's a, it's a big thing. Right now, it's allowed in neighborhoods, which was a surprise to a lot of us.
I think you're right on that, that we shouldn't allow razor wire. The issue is the principles that were presented as to why a 50-foot setback made sense on a golf course had to do with visual blight. And I agree with that. It just seems to me that that may be, that same principle may apply in non-golf course situations. Any other, Councilman Nowakowski, please?
You know, Mayor, I agree with you 100%. In my district, we have a lot of fast foods, gas stations, apartments that have been fenced for years. And it's become a blight area. It's become a place where individuals are camping out, and things, bad things are happening. So, I really think we need to look at it beyond golf courses. And I think that we need to figure out an enforcement tool to it, too, because, basically, once we put up a fence, there's no enforcement at all. So, if we can figure out that enforcement part, I would really like to see that.
How quickly, staff, do you think we could get this in front of the appropriate subcommittee of the City Council? Obviously, we don't want a policy that makes sense for golf courses, but the same principles would apply elsewhere. We don't want to apply the policy elsewhere as well. I think Councilman DeCiccio has presented some very eloquent reasons for the golf courses, but I think they would apply equally in the non-golf course scenario.
Mayor, members of the council, we would go to the Neighborhood Housing and Development Subcommittee, which I believe is not going to meet again until September.
The 17th.
17th?
And we have a blight-related item already on it?
Well, I would leave it up to the chair of the Subcommittee if they want to look at this, because I take seriously the concerns that Councilman Gallego raised, that if, you know, we deal with an issue, and then we bring up additional issues, and we never get back to it. I actually think we should, I'm gonna respect Councilwoman Valenzuela's request because of the timeliness situation in his district to move forward with this. But I think that, I know everybody wants to act consistently with the arguments they made here today on fencing issues generally and blight issues. Councilman Valenzuela?
Mayor, I appreciate what you just said. And I sit on the Neighborhood Subcommittee, and, you know, of course, it's up to the chair to add that, you know, to the agenda. I think it'd be great for us to look at citywide. I agree that we should be looking at this for not only golf courses, but commercial property and everywhere else. For the sake of this agenda item, again, I made a motion, it's the original motion. There are some issues that are happening that are very timely. And given all the, out of respect for all the work that's already been done for this particular, you know, agenda item, I think we should hopefully get to a vote soon. And regardless of what happens with this vote, again, you know, I think we should continue the discussion so that it's a citywide discussion.
Alan Stevenson?
Mayor, members of council, I just want to be clear. Coming back on the 17th, we're happy to come and present some basic information about what the rules are today regarding regular fences and those kinds of things. But I won't be able to have a text amendment like you have before you with actual language to be changed by that time, because we have legal requirements we have to do regarding advertising, going through the Full Village Planning Committee, the Planning Commission, those things. So, that's what I was talking about more towards September timeframe.
So, if we were to adopt these, this policy today, limited to golf courses, but a City Council Subcommittee said the same exact principles would apply for the same reasons stated by Councilman DeCiccio relative to the blight issues in the non-golf course scenario, we couldn't do that through the Subcommittee process? We would have to go back and do, through the, all the Village Planning Committees?
Mayor, members of council, the Village Planning Committees are a policy, so we don't have to go back to them. But the state statute does prescribe, you have to go to the Planning Commission to have a hearing on that. We have notice requirements, we have to post in a newspaper 15 days ahead of time. So, there's those kind of statutory requirements we have to for an actual text amendment to broaden the scope.
So, my request is that maybe the Subcommittee could hear the item, make some policy recommendations, and then, from those recommendations, for the non-golf course scenario, so we can be consistent, take it out to the villages and to the public from there. Would that be an appropriate way moving forward?
Absolutely, Mayor, we can make that up.
So, I just need clarity on this. At this moment, we are discussing the golf course, new recommendations or amendments. And, right now, the discussion is going towards, why don't we broaden this? Why don't we make it for everything? What I would like to do, and may I suggest that, as we broaden to go to different areas, maybe we have that discussion in the Neighborhood Housing, but right now, get to the point of voting for this item and be able then to throw it back as we want to expand or amend back to the Subcommittee. Is that pop?
Let me make sure, yeah, so it's clear. So, the motion was to support staff recommendation with a slight modification that Councilwoman Valenzuela added to it. That motion, there was a motion and a second. Then there was a substitute motion that we not hear this item and send it all back to the villages to consider even the changes made by Councilman Valenzuela. At least, for my suggestion, was very similar to what I think you just said, which is, I want to support Councilman Valenzuela because of the ongoing situation he's got in District Five.
And Councilman DeCiccio also. I mean, the two have dynamics happening in there.
I think in District Six, the fencing's already up. I think in District Five...
That's correct.
The fencing is not up.
Correct.
So, as was explained by Mr. Alan Stevenson, in District Six, it's less of a timely issue because the fence is up already, and they would have to come back at a later time for a, for re-upping the permit. And if they did get it, they would be, these new rules would apply. I think the timeliness issue really is in District Five.
Correct.
Although, we ought to pass good public policy regardless, you know, and it shouldn't be for one particular situation. But in this case, we know one is coming up, and we want to make sure the right fencing policy is in place for the good of that neighborhood. My suggestion was, is that Councilman DeCiccio had made some very eloquent arguments as to why a 50-foot setback made sense from an aesthetic perspective on behalf of the neighborhood in golf course scenario. And I believe that those same principles would likely apply in other scenarios where people would rightfully complain about ugly fences. And, you know, we ought to work to approve the aesthetic elsewhere. My suggestion was, is that, that go back before the Subcommittee as soon as possible for a recommendation. But that recommendation would then have to go through the Village Planning Committee process in the proper notice period. But I wanted to give Councilman Gallego confidence that, even if we move forward with the golf course scenario today, that this item would be coming back, you know, of the issue of, you know, what the proper policy would be for fencing and the aesthetic, you know, our beliefs about what the appropriate aesthetic policy should be for fencing, not just in a golf course scenario, but elsewhere as well. I struggle to figure out the distinction of why we are limiting this to golf courses for today. And I actually think that might be a legal problem in the future, but we ought to clear that up as quickly as we recently can.
Mayor?
Mayor, thank you.
Secretary of City Management is gonna speak.
Just one other thing, too, we would need some time, and we would work through the Subcommittee, is if it goes citywide, there would probably, we need to assess whether there are more enforcement resources needed, because it's a significantly greater number of fences to look at as opposed to a limited number with golf courses. So, we would include that with Mr. Stevenson's support as well.
I guess the principle would be, we don't want to protect aesthetics for people who happen to live on a golf course now. I mean, I mean, we all, we want to protect it for them, too, but we don't want to just protect the aesthetic and the property values, as Councilman DeCiccio mentioned, for people who just happen to live on golf courses. We want to do it for others as well. Other comments or questions?
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Yeah, we're in total agreement on this one, Mayor. I totally agree on this. As a matter of fact, it was an issue I brought up earlier. I said, "Look, we ought to be looking at this across the city of Phoenix." But we gotta look at the fact that commercial properties, because they're smaller, are gonna have different circumstances. So, whatever we craft, you want to craft it for the fact that they're smaller properties. But there's no reason that I can think of that we allow fences going to the property line right now on some of these commercial properties. It doesn't make logical sense. If they're closing it down, you want to put a fence close to the building, but there doesn't seem a logical sense for it to come across the entire property. So, I think we're onto something here, and I think it's something that could be revolutionary in the city of Phoenix and across the valley, because I don't think anyone's done anything like this. In particular, the fact that you've gotta go through the use permit process with these golf courses now. So, I, I'm favorable toward it, Mayor, I think it'd be great. But we've gotta take a look reasonably and make it, take a look at the fact that smaller properties have different issues than larger ones. But I think we're heading in the right direction.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other additional comments? Council, Vice Mayor?
I'm just concerned that, you know, we've taken this to a different level, we'll put it that way. You know, a golf course is, I don't know, 100 acres usually, generally. I know we've got at least one that's smaller in our city portfolio of golf courses. But generally speaking, you're talking 100, potentially 200 acres. I think Moon Valley Bill is like 220 acres, something like that. That's a lot different than, I think, Councilman Nowakowski mentioned, like, fast food restaurants. Obviously, that's not 220, it might be, might be an acre. You know, that's just a different level of deal. I would hate to see us craft something that treats those things exactly the same, because the needs might be different. A golf course also isn't, for the most part, you've got clubhouse, et cetera, potentially, but it's not a building. It has different kinds of hazards, it has the water, the sand that was mentioned earlier. So, I don't necessarily want to see, at least from my part personally, if I vote for this now, I don't necessarily want to see that as signing off on the conversation that's just been had about how this should apply to everything else as well. I think that's, that's a little worrisome. So, I just want to make sure we're talking about two distinct things. There's a vote today, and there's what might happen in the future.
Mayor?
Just a moment, Vice Mayor, did you hear?
Yeah, no, let's go ahead, he can go ahead.
Okay, Councilman DeCiccio?
Yeah, and I can respond to that. I don't think anyone's advocating it to be exactly the same, they can't. Logically speaking, there's no way it can be exactly the same, because there are different circumstances under each individual property. One of the things that you're right about, that you're talking about massive amounts of property here with golf courses, but with some of the commercial properties, we can adapt a policy, we can at least look at the policy. You can always look at the details, I agree with you on that, Vice Mayor. But we ought to be looking at how we can reduce these blighted situations in neighborhoods as well. And I'm totally open to it, but, again, the devil's in the details, and it's gonna require a lot more work than a golf course ordinance. A considerable amount more, because you've gotta take a look, and you've got a lot more stakeholders you gotta deal with, too. And you've gotta take into fact that some of these buildings are under construction, rather than closing them down. But the razor wire is a significant issue, and it goes across the entire city.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments before we take a vote? So, right now, the motion that is on the table is a motion to not vote on this today, but to send this back immediately to the villages. That's just limited to the motion relative to the golf courses that the issue for today. So, that is a voice vote? So, all in favor, say aye?
No.
No.
Any nays?
No.
I'll do that again. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
No.
Okay, my judgment, the nays have it. So, now we're gonna go back to the underlying motion, which is Councilman Valenzuela's motion on the staff recommendation with amendments to it. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
No.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Mayor Stanton? Yeah, so that item passes on a seven to two, which means that the rest of it, looking at further fencing issues, will go before Subcommittee, and then, whatever recommendation comes out of that committee, then, soon thereafter, as soon as possible, back before this body.
We'll make sure that happens, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item is item 69, which is 59th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. Do we need a staff presentation on this?
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to, if you want, but I don't believe you need any one?
Quickly.
Okay, this is a general plan amendment for 59th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. It's a 162-acre parcel that is along the Future Loop 202. The Estrella Village is supportive of it. They, although they did not have a quorum to make an official recommendation, but it was approved by the Planning Commission eight to zero. And I don't believe there's any, anyone in opposition to this case whatsoever. The same holds true for item 70, that's just a zoning case for the exact same site.
Do we need separate hearings on 69 and 70? We do, okay. So, this will be the hearing on item number 69. So, this would be to remove that portion out of the Estrella Village core and allow commercial and industrial uses. That public hearing is now open. Are there any cards on item number 69? Is anyone in the audience here to testify on item number 69? Which would be a general plan amendment, 59th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road, going once, going twice. The public hearing is now closed. Is now, should we vote on 69 first or hold the public hearing on 70 first? I think they're related items, or does it matter?
Mayor, members of council, it's better to go ahead and vote on the particular item and then hold the public hearing for item 70.
Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion on item number 69?
Recommendation?
We have a motion, do we have a second? Councilman Nowakowski, do you want to adopt a related ordinance as well?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Mayor, members of council, this one's actually the related resolution, because it's a general plan amendment.
Councilman Nowakowski, did you want to adopt the related resolution as well?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? Yes, item number 70 is a public hearing, also on 59th Avenue and Lower Buckeye Road. What would this one do, Mr. Stevenson?
Mayor, members of council, this is a request to rezone the site from C2, RE 35, and RE 35, approved R2 to A1 and Commerce Park, General Commerce Park, to allow for commercial and industrial uses for a future development along the 202.
We will now have a public hearing on item number 70. Public hearing is open. Are there any cards on item number 70? Are there any, anyone, any member of the public here which should provide testimony on item number 70? Going once, going twice, the public hearing is now closed. Councilman Nowakowski, do you have a motion on item number 70?
Yes, Mayor, a motion to approve prior to Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt related ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Valenzuela? Williams? Waring? Mayor Stanton? Yes.
Oh, Mayor, I forgot to put in, build the 202.
That'll be a future agenda item at a later date. That was not an appropriate motion for today's agenda. Our attorney said so. So, we have all, I think all the business is completed for today's meeting. So, this meeting is now...